I'd like to welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. This morning, we have Dr. Tony Romans with us to please lead us in the invocation, and Commissioner McCam, the pledges.
Holy Father, we acknowledge your glory, the glory of who you are, Creator, giver, sustainer of all our life, every aspect of our life. God, you are the owner, we are stewards. Father, we pray today for the commissioners, for our judge, as they hold in stewardship that which you've placed in them. Father, we pray that you would add your favor and blessing to their giftedness and diligence that what may be accomplished would be in your will and for your purposes. Father, may we be a people who honor and glorify you in all that we do. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Dr. Romans, thank you, sir. All right, well, the time is 9:02. We do have a forum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court on January 30, 2024. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the minutes?
Hearing non-judicial move, we approve the minutes from Commissioner's Court regular session, January 30, 2024, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tullie and second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the minutes of January 30, 2024, as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item number two, consider and take action on a request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector. Good morning.
Good morning. I have nine refund checks for court approval totaling $64,343 and one penny.
Court questions, comments?
We did, I'd asked about the one that was refunded $36,000 and found out that they are being reduced that because I think it was only 25% completion on the home, I guess when it's assessed or something, or on the assessment or something on it, so.
Any other questions? Entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the refund checks as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Harris County Tax Assessor Collector as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item three is consider and take action to accept the racial profiling report from Henderson County Constable Precinct 2 for filing purposes only. In court, we have again before us a racial profiling exemption form that has been filed by our Constable Precinct 2, Mr. Ramsey. Any discussion? Entertaining motion?
So moved to approve?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tullie and second by Commissioner McCam to accept the racial profiling report from the Henderson County Constable Precinct 2 for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item number four is consider and take action on application for body worn camera program grant for fiscal year 2025. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. So just as is, consider and take action on application for body worn cameras. We'll submit it February 8th if approved. It is up to $10 million in funding.
Up to $2 million?
$10 million.
Oh, $10 million? That's in total across the program?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there a match to it?
No, this would be matched 100%.
No, there is?
No, excuse me, that's for the body armor. This match requirement's 25%.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir. This is, this is, we want to put off to court a couple of weeks ago, and this is the finalizing paperwork of the resolution forward, and it's up to 50 cameras, there's 25% match. But with looking at everything, the estimates that we've got, and the discounts that they gave us, it's probably going to eat up the match, so we can probably, we'll be responsible for, you know, if the court approves it, we'll grant it to the department.
Do we just have, do we have any car now, or just?
Yes, sir. I've got any car right now.
But no body?
But no body cams, and of course, no any cars. Old too, we'll have to replace it soon. So hopefully, we'll have big enough, if this is approved wherever we are, we'll have a big enough storage area where if we upgrade anything on later, we don't have to pay for an extra storage.
And isn't that the true cost involved in this? Is the storage of these large video files that have to be kept? It's in that storage where the expense is?
Yes, it's over $400, $500, $100.
Right. The storage portion.
Do you have to store every day?
Yes, sir.
Just in case?
Any traffic stop or anything that we make contact with anybody, it's automatically, we have to keep it 90 days. If there was no case filed with it, if there is a case, then if intentions attach to that case.
Any other questions, Court? Of course, passing this resolution clears the way for us to make the application, which I believe is due in a very short time, time taken. Okay. Court, questions, comments? Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the application for body worn camera program grant for fiscal year 2025. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number five is consider and take action on application for rifle resistant body armor grant program fiscal year 2025. Ms. Vaughn?
And this one's matched 100% per Mr. Mills narrative, that we have 75 officers that we're looking to get rifle resistant body armor for.
Court, questions? We currently use a federal funded grant, and I'm trying to remember the name of it, that we hit, I'm sorry.
Patrick Legge, sorry.
The grant that we have been using for our bulletproof vest is one that has a matching. As you stated earlier, this one does not.
Correct.
And it does open up to a broader scope of protection.
Yes, it does.
Is what it is, where the other one was not tailored toward this particular type of resistant armor. So hopefully, we'll be successful in this, as we have been with the others, and maybe can shift much of our bulletproof vest work to this grant away from the other one. Court, questions?
Do we have any rifle resistant now, or is it all?
We do, of course, when all of our rifle resistant armor is outdated, and that's when this was brought up, that's why we would like to apply for this one, because all of our rifle resistant armor is outdated.
Any other questions or comments? This one as well is on that same tight deadline, and by passing this resolution, we start the process.
Yes, sir.
All right. Court, if there's no further discussion, entertaining motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the resolution on the application for the rifle resistant body armor grant program for fiscal year 2025 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Item number six is consider and take action to amend the Henderson County purchasing policy to increase the three quote threshold from $5,000 to $10,000. Court, we were having some internal discussion last week concerning the purchasing policy and this particular item. We actually did do this previously. The verbiage within the actual purchasing manual is slightly conflicting, but at this point in time, you can see what we sent unto you. It does currently allow for the $5,000 to $10,000 with verbal quotes. And of course, when we originally did this in 2019, I believe it was, we moved from $3,500, I believe is what it was, may have been $5,000 previously, I just remember it being quite a bit, a long discussion we had, we met six, seven times, I even went back and looked at the video when we passed this. But Commissioner Richardson, if you want to expound on why you were requesting this, and then we'll move on, because honestly, there's no action really here to take.
Yes, I'd got a quote from someone to remove some trees on the road. I had 12 trees on the road that I was getting complaints on that needed bucket trucks and it's kind of emergency situation, so I went ahead and had them start the job, and then I found out that our purchasing policy said we had to get quotes if it was over $5,000. And so that's what brought this up in the deal, to find out if we were doing what we're supposed to, and I think we decided that it'd already been passed back in 19, I think, and so, like I say, I don't think any action needs to be taken on it.
Any further comments or discussion, Court? No actions necessary on this item, so we'll move on. Item number seven is consider and take action on a request from Constable Precinct 5 to appoint an additional deputy constable, and it has been many years since we've had a request come before us. This is brought, as it's said, by Constable 5, Constable Myers, of him wishing to appoint, which is actually the former constable, Mr. Lana Yarborough, as a reserve officer. Way back in the early 2000s, Henderson County passed a, or the court did, passed a resolution limiting the number of deputies, deputy constables to two per constable. And to be quite honest, it has been so long since we have done one. I believe, trying to remember who, I believe it was Constable Graham, probably the last one that we ever appointed for, if I remember right, and that was many years ago.
Graham, and I think John Floyd started that as a deputy constable, I think, and I think Buzz Sides was one of down at four also.
Right. So, Commissioner Spidey, have you had any discussions with Constable Myers?
I did speak with him yesterday, and he is out with the flu. He just said, he just wanted to know, it was okay either way, he said, whatever he decided to do.
What's his, what would be his duties?
Honestly, normally, it's a way for them to continue to have somebody carry their commission.
Oh.
That's pretty much the norm. There, many years ago, there was discussion about using deputy constables in additional vehicles to patrol areas, but we found that there was more expense than there was return on the investment of gas and repair on older vehicles. And actually, it was through Constable Yarborough that we did quite a bit of that, and I believe it was 2001 or '02, actually, at the genesis of the public nuisance program. But there's quite a few difficulties that followed along with that, and court has been reluctant since then to implement this, to re-implement this strategy.
Does it come at any cost to the county?
Not for salary, and it depends how much activity there is.
Insurance?
No, there is no insurance that way, other than that commission is carried by Henderson County Office. That is the only possible issue that could cause any type of liability onto the county.
Well, in addition to workers' comp and?
Yes.
General liability, that includes them.
Does that allow that deputy, just like a constable, to do security work and stuff like that at places?
I would assume so, given the fact that they would be a commissioned officer, and most of those places are enjoying those services from commissioned officers. Sheriff, would you?
On the reserves, there's lots, there's a lot of limitations on what a reserve can do off duty as far as security work, and most of the time, a reserve officer is not allowed to do security type situations unless it's a traffic control for a company that does traffic control right now. So the only, you know, he could use him for, you know, to go out and start papers or do normal duties, but most of the time, it's used to just, to carry the commission, you know, to both with his license, so his license.
That was one of the things, I'm glad you brought that up. Back when the constables served all the civil papers, they would leverage these reserve deputies to help with that. But in 2011 or '12, Commissioners Court, is it four civil deputies that we added in and removed that responsibility from the constables' offices of serving the civil papers out of what we call the central courts here, and only left them with the papers of their court or whatever process that was asked for for out of county in their area. So the papers is something they can do, but gracious, we removed 90% of their paperwork from them when we added those deputies to the civil division and sheriff's department.
You say we have to fight workers' comp and liability insurance?
Yes, they're covered under both of those.
Any further discussion? Comments?
Was this, did this work in the past, or are you saying no, or it's kind of new to me?
It is a practice that the Court began, the Commissioners Court began to shy away from many years ago due to complications.
And I think a lot of it was had to do with personal vehicles and stuff like that, what they had on them.
Is this, yes, sir, as I said, complications. We had one, there was an issue, I believe it was in Henderson County as well, where you had a reserve deputy, and I know we had a request here of reserve deputy wanting to put Henderson County logos on their personal cars and then use them in county business, and that is not allowed. As I said, the matters became very convoluted and complicated years ago. Not saying that that is what would happen here, it's just past experiences. Any further discussion? Is there a motion? Item fails for lack of motion. Item number eight, we're see financial reports. We have the combined JP County and District Court financial reports that are available to viewing after court in the county clerk's office, if you so wish. Item nine is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet, which we have none. Item number 10 is consider and take action on submitted contracts, and we have, waiting on my computer here, there should be three in here for fire alarms, fire monitoring, and that includes the courthouse, this annex, and the judicial complex, because again, I can't get them to pull up, starting the monitoring service on those. We've had them come out, as you tell when you came in, this one was beeping due to the construction, but several months ago, we were in a position with those that we had to have new communicators installed and refreshing some very old systems that during budget this year, we'll look at discussing replacing. But right now, they're all up and functional, and to be in full compliance for $52 a year per site, or $52 a month per site, we can have that monitoring in place.
Have we had that before?
Yes. Not with this company.
Right, yeah.
Or is it monitored out of?
Sulfur spring.
Sulfur spring?
Sulfur springs. No, sir, I'm sorry, we'll spawn, not sulfur, we'll say. Any questions, comments?
Will they come in and put, will they have to do anything with equipment we already have? Do they have to put in fire alarms that relay back to them, or what do they?
No, it is communicated through phone lines. The equipment locally is, as it is operating, when it senses a problem through the phone communications, it alerts them monitoring, which I got an email yesterday morning when upstairs, there was a monitor that was disturbed because of the HVAC system, and I got notification from it, they notify Fire Marshal's Office, there's a whole list as you run down, dispatches on there with 911. So it is a standard monitoring contract. All three of them.
I noticed on the bills there was a $1,320 pre-programming fee for each side.
That was the correction to the equipment. This is strictly for the monitoring service.
We have to authorize the judge to sign this?
Yes. Any further questions or comments? Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make the motion to move into contract with CMT Security for fire alarm monitoring with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the three CMT security contracts for fire alarm monitoring with the county judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Court. Item 11, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits.
There's no.
Quite a few. Commissioner Spidey, you're first up.
Mine's just a simple little request, there's just a little bit of County Road 1408 that they'll be working in the right-of-way on an aerial, putting fiber optic in the existing poles. Part of 1408, they're going to be working on, and 1409 belongs to the city, they're just of Athens, there's just a little part that belongs to the county.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed utility line activity with charter spectrum to work within the right-of-way of County Road 1408 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the right-of-way request with charter spectrum for the installation of fiber optic cable on County Road 1408 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Commissioner McCam?
All right, sir. But I would like to say in public first, that since they've started changing some of these, a lot of these roads, we've already approved for overhead, and they're coming back and changing on the underground, and we're having a lot of problems. I don't know if they're looking at the old notice of utility line activity papers that we filled out, but some of these roads are starting on before we get them approved. They're not getting in contact with a lot of these rural water companies, and these rural water companies only have two or three employees, and you can imagine, when you're running hundreds of miles of fiber, how many water lines they're cutting. And a lot of these are not getting located, they're not calling the water company and getting those lines located. They're starting, we've talked to Clint's office, maybe some ramifications of some of these things, they're working on that far, but I want them to know in public that we're fixing to quit, my precinct three fixing to put an end to giving them these right-of-ways if they don't start getting the jobs right, because we've got to protect our constituents. And I mean, they're doing things, a lot of things look good, they're coming back cleaning it up, but in a lot of places, they're not. They're leaving their cable laying out, they're leaving their, that pipe laying out, they're leaving wooden pallets laying in the right-of-way, so all of this stuff's got to be cleaned up, and we're getting Clint to look at it for, the county attorney's office to look at it, see if there's any ramifications. We do have some, we don't know how we can use them yet, but I want them to know, if they're listening, that we're going to have to get these right, and I don't care if they've got a permit for overhead, when you start going underground, it's a whole different story.
Mm-hmm.
So they've got to have those permits before they can go underground. But, but that said, and we'll have that discussion with some of their foremen also, I have several County Road, this is for charter spectrum fiber optic cable, County Road 3613, 3614, 3615, 3612, and 3611. That's for 33,000 feet of underground conduit, 89 volts.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion.
I move that we approve the notice of proposed utility line activity with Charter Spectrum for fiber optic cable on most roads mentioned.
I'll second the motion.
With your authorization?
With the Commissioner's authorization.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreement with Charter Spectrum for fiber optic installation on County Road 3611, 3612, 3613, 3614, and 3615 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes.
I vote no.
Passes four one, Commissioner Tulley voted against. Commissioner?
Another one from Charter Spectrum for fiber optic cable on County Road 3606 and 3600. 7,400 feet of underground conduit, 24 volts.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the notice of proposed utility line activity for Charter Spectrum for fiber cable, optic cable on County Road 3606 and 3600 with the Commissioner's signature.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Spidey to approve the right-of-way request with Charter Spectrum for fiber optic installation on County Roads 3600 and 3606 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Oppose? Passes four one, Commissioner Tulley against.
Another one for proposed utility line activity for Charter Spectrum fiber optic cable on County Road 3413. 13,000 feet.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed utility line activity for Charter Spectrum for fiber optic cable on County Road 3413.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam.
Did I say with signatures of the Commissioner?
Believe you did. Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way request from Charter Spectrum for fiber optic cable installation on County Road 3413 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Passes four one.
Also, one more, Charter Spectrum fiber optic cable, County Road 3613, 3617, 3600, and 3618. That's for 25,000 feet of underground conduit, 39 volts and 12 pedestals.
3600, 13, 17, and 18?
Yep.
Okay. Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion.
And like I mentioned, I, we want to get fiber to the rural areas as bad as anybody else. I mean, we're glad they're here, we're glad we're progressing, we're glad they're putting in this land. It's going to get cable out in areas that, I mean, internet out in areas that probably wouldn't have never gotten it if the federal government wouldn't have put this money forward. And Charter Spectrum's doing a good job in some areas, but we've got to get, we've got to get right, especially with these rural water supplies, because they're just, they're overloaded. Most of these guys only have one or two employees. And working seven days a week right now. But anyway, with that said, I move to approve those for Charter Spectrum on 3613, 3617, 3600, and 3618 with the Commissioner's signature.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way request from Charter Spectrum for fiber optic installation on the aforementioned county roads with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Passes four one. Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, Court. First thing I wanted to say is, when we do approve these proposed utility line activities on the bottom line, it does say, please notify Commissioner, it has a blank with the Commissioners to be notified 48 hours prior to start of construction. I don't think I've ever been notified by any construction that was going to go on the 48 hours. We showed up on the road yesterday to do some wash work on the side of the road, and they were working on the road. And that's the main thing, is to keep us out of the same areas at the same time and praying to work, or not try to work on top of each other. And so that's another thing that they, that we're going to get them to do is abide by contacting us, when they're going to start a job and when, so we not schedule to work on top of them at the same time in the right-of-way, so. That being said, I've got a utility line activity for Charter Spectrum that was going to be aerial, and it's switched to 57,336 foot of underground fiber, 86 volts, 17 pedestals. And that's on County Road 4325, 4330, 4331, 4334, 4828, 4829, 4830, 4831, 4832, 4833, and 4835.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the utility line activity for the 57,336 foot of underground, 86 volts, and 17 pedestals on County Roads 4325, 4330, 4331, 4334, 4828, 4829, 4830, 4831, 4832, 4833, and 4835 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the right-of-way request with Charter Spectrum for the installation of fiber optic cable along the aforementioned county roads with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Oppose? Passes four one. Commissioner?
This is a, was an emergency utility line activity that Virginia Hill had to come out on Sunday, and then it nighed on Monday for the fiber optic cable that's being laid. So I had people without water on a Sunday afternoon, it'd be the 10:30 and that, the following Monday from water lines had been done, so they had to go ahead and go out and do them, and so I've got this down so we can know and report on the locations that were cut and stuff. So there's emergency repairs on County Road 4700 and 4800 also.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the utility line activities for Virginia Hill Water Supply Company to perform emergency repairs to water main on County Road 4700 and 4800 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spidey to approve the right-of-way agreement with Virginia Hill Water Supply Corporation for emergency repairs on County Roads 4700 and 4800 caused by Spectrum Communications with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 12, considering take action on submitted budget amendments, of which we have none. And then item 13 is considering take action on payment of bills, Ms. Carpenter.
Yes, sir, we have two sets. They're fiscal year 2024, a total of $2,239,759.87. And you have a title on the date, it's supposed to be 2/6/24.
Commissioner Spidey?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
That's a pretty high number.
It is.
I think after we get to, you're going to give an explanation of it?
Yes, sir.
No questions, Judge.
In this bill, we, in this set of bills, yes, it is 2.2 million, but it is the second payment in here of 1.4 million for the renovations that have been ongoing in the sheriff's, excuse me, in the jail for the last six months. That is the water conservation and the HVAC system upgrades, which has actually been one of the better projects to handle. Myself, the sheriff, and Commissioner McCam sit on this particular committee, and we're coming to the end of that. Sheriff, you want to speak anything to that project?
I mean, it's been a great project, probably got some sort of fix that need to be fixed. They're doing everything, they said they were going to do it, closing it down as soon as they get the control systems on the road, like if they need to be, they need to be sneezed, and the water will be fixed, hopefully, hopefully, early next month, we'll be behind this, but I believe we've already seen quite a bit of conservation and water savings since we started the project.
It has been, when we started this, the projections were we would have a 10-year payout, break even on this, which actually the majority of the savings is expected through water conservation, that's the large majority. If many of you have been a part of the Commissioners' Court over the last 10 years, have been a lot of discussion about water, and it's how we pay more for water than we do for electricity. And so this is the steps into reining that in, along with the much-needed upgrades to the HVAC system. It's hard to believe that those units up there are 15, 16 years old, it's been that long since we've made the expansion, adding, doubling the size of the jail. So time flies. But that's why, that's why this particular set of bills is as high as it is, because of that completion. The total project was about 3.1 million, 3.2 million, and I think we still have another 175,000 left through the punch list and retainage, so.
Sheriff, I think I was told with this company, y'all are actually going to get some hands-on training on the controls and stuff, and the previous vendor, y'all had no authority to mess with the controls or do anything on, was that?
Yes, we basically keep the controls, the settings, and this vendor's been outstanding with their products and their teaching, they're keeping, I'm making this guy's, stay in contact with them and teach them everything they need to know. It'll be a much better system, and it'll be a much better system for the future also because it's not proprietary, therefore if we end up having to go with different type units in the future, it should still connect to this system, to this control system.
In the last four years, this court has made almost $12 million in capital investments into law enforcement, $12 million worth of capital investments, that includes the radio system, this upgrade, the locks and cameras, not mention, not to mention the ARBA funding, that 12 million is strictly from county proceeds, and it has been fantastic effort that we have had to incur zero debt over. So if anybody ever wants to say, plus what we've done with law enforcement, with everyone else over the last six years, the beating law enforcement has taken, we've done just the opposite. Over the last three years, we've given raises focused in on the Sheriff's Department, and also this $12 million worth of capital improvements, but it's a lot play into it about how good our Sheriff's Department is, so.
And a lot of this stuff, you know, is, has to be done due to jail standards, and it's mandated that we keep all this stuff up to date, and I think it's probably helped keep out of some lawsuits and stuff also by the stuff that's been installed into the jail, is what I'm told, so it all adds up and got to be done.
That's right. Any further discussion on the 2024 bills? Entertained a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $2,239,759.87 with the update of the change of the court date.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Spidey to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $2,239,759.87 with notation of the corrected date. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Ms. Carpenter?
I have fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $65,435.1.
Commissioner Spidey?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertained a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills in the amount of $65,435.1, and also I think that needs a correction on the court date also as well.
So I have to set them up by two different dates because I'm hitting two different budgets?
Okay.
So fiscal year 2023 is always Monday?
Always Monday, that works, so as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spidey to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills in the amount of $65,435.1. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Item 14, considering take action on submitted plats.
We have one plat in precinct two, and I'll be in the bed.
Commissioner Tulley?
Yes, this is in the Park Harbor subdivision, and both the lots are owned by the same property owner, and when they went to build the house and do the survey, or they did the survey and then built the house, their concrete patio and the, something, I guess, a chimney is too close to the lot line, and so there, you can see where their original lot line is, and they're asking, it doesn't change the existing road frontage that they already had, it's the back of the lot that they're moving over 14 foot to coincide with a five-foot easement on each side of the property.
Questions for the Commissioner?
Hearing that, Judge, I move we approve the final replat of Park Harbor of lots 51 and 52, Block Two, creating Block Two, lots 51R and 52R for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the final replat in Park Harbor for replat of lots 51 and 52 into lots 51R and 52R for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Passes four one. I oppose the... Item 15, open and consider bids.
Good morning.
Morning.
Precinct two is looking to go out for bid for a few used pickup trucks. Pickup trucks are 21 or 22 half-ton pickup truck, two-wheel drive. You prefer a crew cab, under 60,000 miles, with automatic transmission, also a 2018 or 19 3/4 ton truck with four-wheel drive, also crew cab, preferably under 120,000 miles with automatic transmission as well, and then a 2018 or 19 3/4 ton pickup, two-wheel drive, double cab, under 80,000 miles, automatic transmission. The dates will be, the first ad ran the 10th, second ad ran the 17th, we can open it on the 27th and bring it back to court on the 5th.
Commissioner?
Yeah, our trucks are just, that we have, they're on their last leg, I think they're O5s and one's an O7. And our Tahoe has got about 200,000 miles on it, so these, these trucks here, if we get some bids, we'll...
we'll kind of replace our fleet and update them almost 10 to 12 years to, some of them have been there since you probably started. So anyway, we're just trying to replace our fleet and update.
So he's saying he's missing his mechanic?
Sir?
You're missing your mechanic?
No, I have, I've hired one. We'll be putting the ones that have jumper wires to the side over there on the by the fence, and we'll have new ones that don't have jumper wires.
One thing about River Bridge, get every ounce of out of
Oh, absolutely.
The equipment, vehicles, all four precincts do.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Come up here.
Can I just say, so moved to approve?
He didn't make a motion.
I move that we go out for bid for a 2021, 2022 half-ton pickup truck, two-wheel drive, crew cab under 60,000, automatic. A 2018 to 2019 3/4-ton four-wheel drive, crew cab under 120, automatic. 2018, 2019 3/4-ton pickup, two-wheel drive, double cab, under 80,000, and automatic. With the first ad running Saturday, February the 10th, 2024. Second ad running Saturday, February 17th, 2024. Open the bids on Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, and award the bids Tuesday, March 5th, 2024.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the 2024 invitation for bid for used pickups for Precinct 2 with the aforementioned posting dates. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thanks, Court.
Thank you.
Item 16, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:51. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you for being with us today.